All right, good evening everybody. I'm gonna use this. I've never used it.
You've never used it?
Good evening everybody, happy spring. You can actually say that, so we'll call the meeting to order at 7:04 PM. Our first item of business as always will be the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So at every meeting, we have a portion of our agenda that's set aside for citizens' concerns. The way the school committee proceedings proceed is that we ask folks who would like to share some questions or concerns to come up to the microphone, state your name, address, and then we respectfully ask for a three-minute cap on statements, seeing a number of people in the audience, as we've done in the past, when it's an agenda item that we suspect are expecting people to speak to. We do not respond in an open forum format. We will listen to what people have to say and respond accordingly at a future time. If someone has already spoken to a point that you were thinking of making, please hold your comments or feel free to send an email to the school committee or superintendent Phelan. We do have a limited time on the agenda for the citizens' concerns, about 10 minutes. We have some flexibility there with the chairperson's report being eliminated because of anticipated comments and no student report to accommodate this evening, so if there are any citizens who have any statements or concerns they'd like to make, we invite you to come up to the microphone. Oh, one additional item, sorry. On the agenda this evening, there is the presentation about the after-school care, so it's because of the way the agenda is ordered, perhaps listening to that first, you would be informed about things that would then change the statements or questions that you might have, but we're sticking with it so that people can leave if they want to get home and things happen to take a longer time than they expect, so I just wanted to say that the presentation will be up on our website, the district website, tomorrow, after seeing it this evening. Okay. Thank you.
This is really intimidating. Okay. My name is Emily Running and I live at 55 Thomas Street. Is that everything I was supposed to say?
Yes.
I'm here to address the topic that we're talking about tonight of aftercare. Some of you have heard me speak in numerous things and meetings. I'm here representing the lot of us, at least at Wellington, but I'm happy to speak for the other kids that couldn't get in their local aftercare programs. At Wellington, it's at least 75. There are projections that it's double that, maybe even more, because lots of families were told that don't even bother getting in the waitlist because there's no chance they'll get in. So I'm here because I've been trying to do a lot of work. I came into this process like, maybe I can just help, and I've been very, I've been trying to approach this from a, what can we all do to try to solve this problem? And I'm still here today to try to figure out solutions to solve this problem. I've called outside vendors, I've met with the local, with our principal, I've met with Mr. Phelan, lots of this school committee, trying to come up with some ideas. One of the suggestions that Superintendent Phelan came up with was, why don't you get on the board, so that you can voice your concerns? The problem is, at least at Wellington, if you're not currently a family in aftercare, you can't get on the board. So I went to a meeting and presented some ideas along with someone who couldn't be here tonight, and those ideas were presented, and I'm not really sure what was done with those ideas, but it's a tough situation because the feeling that I got from everyone sitting on the board was that they empathized with our plight, but they also are afraid of losing their spots because it's a really great program, we all want to get in, but everything that we were proposing, like perhaps, maybe people only get three days and that way it's more equitable across the board, or what if we have an annual lottery? Because as it stands right now, if you don't get in kindergarten, you are locked out potentially the entire elementary school career, while some kids get to go every single year, year after year. And everyone was like, yeah, those sound like great, those sound like great ideas, but I'm afraid I might lose my own spot. And so I can completely empathize because I think I would struggle with that too if I was sitting in the board and feeling like, I don't want to have to go through what you're feeling. It's hard, so I'm here just asking for help, whether it be space, working with the aftercare board to perhaps come up with some ideas that I can't do from someone from the outside, perhaps proposing an annual lottery, I feel like that makes a lot of sense, and this being a public school, it feels fair that people who are attending school get, you know, year after year, we get a chance that the people before got, and make it equitable. So, I don't know, what else was I gonna say? I think I just want to go by saying, go out and saying, I think that what the Wellington Board has done is created a really great program, which is why I'm here, I would like my kids to be in it, but if there are other options that provide care for everyone else, I would hope that they would consider that, and the student count, the student committee would, I'm sorry, school committee would also help the board to consider all the options on the table and not just protect their, the aftercare program that they've built up and I believe is good, except if it's good, it should serve the entire school community. That's it. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jen McGovern. I'm the co-president of the Wellington Student Care Program, and I wanted to provide some information on behalf of our group, just to make sure facts were clear and also that first our perspective was accurately represented. So I think I'd start by saying, our program is actually an independent nonprofit organization. We lease space from Belmont Public Schools. We serve all children in the K through four community at Wellington, but we're based on a capacity, we're licensed by the state, the state, our state license accommodates 170 children per day. We actually serve 241 children in the Wellington community, and we do that by trying to accommodate different schedules on, at different points of time. We do have a waitlist, that is correct. We are about 50 kids on the waitlist right now, and we work actively to get children off of the waitlist as much as we can, and there is actually quite a bit of movement off the waitlist, and we have that, that information, we're happy to share that data with you. Right now, we are actively looking at ways that we can expand our program, so this is something we're in active dialogue with our school administration right now, and Superintendent Phelan, and what's necessary is additional secure dedicated space that we can use on an everyday basis, because you can imagine with 170 children per day, from right from dismissal to six o'clock, you have to have a place to locate them and then you rotate them through snacks, activities, outdoor time. So it's logistically complex, but we're willing to, and we have a plan to expand if we can get that secured space, so that's something we're working on right now and we're going to do, so I want to make sure that everybody understands that. In addition, this is something we've been aware of. For context, I've been on the board six years, so I'm actually in my last months at Wellington, so I'm not protecting a spot, and none of us are protecting a spot, we're trying to really support a program. That's our duty as a board, and we have many duties as a board, we operate with a charter of a nonprofit. So we're trying to support the program and do everything we can to support as many families at Wellington, but there is a capacity constraint, so that's something we need to deal with. So we're actively exploring that, those options, and really want to do that and work with the town. In addition, we are really supportive and would love to be part of a townwide solution to look at other options. I think it's, this is a growing problem in Belmont, the demographics continue to grow, and most families are, a lot of families, a growing number, have two parents who work. Aftercare is an essential part of what we need as families, as a town, so I think we are all struggling with capacity, the schools are struggling with capacity in the current buildings. So as this problem grows and the need grows, we really need to expand beyond and look beyond what we can do in our current infrastructure. What other solutions could come to play? And I think we've come up with ideas of short, medium, and long-term solutions that we'd love to bring forward and work on. So it's something I've worked on for six years, and we actually were able to expand our program about three years ago from 145 students to 170, so that was a start, but that's, it's not going to fix the problem, and I don't think, you just don't have the space. With state licensing requiring 35 square foot per child for a license, there's some challenges with the lab program and also with the preschool at Wellington. So we're happy to be creative, we want to partner with our administration and with all of you to find solutions, so I wanted to make sure that that was clear. So I think that's the two things I would love to just walk away with it. We're doing everything we can as a program, and we're looking at it in ways we can do that within the current constraints, and that we'd love to be part of a townwide solution.
Thank you.
So there's a one-page, two one-page documents. Hi. My name is Amy Checkaway. I live at 26 Closet Road. I am the co-president with Jen of the Wellington Student Care Program. Thank you for letting us share our input tonight. I'm here as a board member, I'm also here as a parent, I'm also here as a concerned community member, so I just want to quickly supplement a few things that Jen said with some additional information. I'd like to start by just quickly touching on, as a board, our focus on the quality of our program. I then quickly like to talk about a little bit more of some of the constraints with the size of our program and the space that we have for our program, and just have a few closing thoughts about the process moving forward, so I will go very fast. So I think as a board member, I just really want to impress, because I think there has been some misinformation informally spreading around, that we have a really special, strong program at Wellington School right now. I'm a childcare policy researcher, I've been in childcare programs, both early childhood programs and after-school programs across the state and across the country, and I've been to a lot of really mediocre programs, and so I have a fifth grader right now who goes every day to the middle school program, every day of the week, every week of the year, and I have a second grader who is in the Wellington program, my fifth grader was there from K through five as well. So I've been in there every day, I think I have great respect for the leadership of the program, for the staff who he has been able to retain over multiple years, which is actually unusual, again, sort of in the context of most after-school programs, it's a difficult issue to solve in terms of finding folks who are able to work in the part-time capacity. Also, it doesn't pay as well as it should. So we have dedicated staff, and we have a lot of, as I'm sure you've heard, really happy parents and kids, and I always like to approach issues with keeping kids at the center of the process, and I think in this case, also keeping parents close to that kids in terms of what the needs are. So when my now-fifth grader entered kindergarten, it was actually under the prior leadership, the program was a very different one from what it is today, what we've built over the past handful of years. He had a very difficult time in kindergarten, he cried almost every day. All of the kids of multiple grades were often all together in the cafeteria. When I arrived, the staff were not sort of attuned to his needs, he was a very typical student otherwise, happy day of the day, and I saw just through the lack of structure and I think through the large groups, what a program should not be. Now, when I show up at the program every day, including today, I show up at 5:30, 5:45, and my kids want to stay for 10 more minutes, and I think a lot of parents have had that experience as well. So just want to make sure those facts are known. I think as a community member, as Jen said, I'm really concerned about where we currently are in terms of after-school options. I think Belmont's probably a little bit behind the curve, and I think we've, we're reaching a crisis point and facing many of the same issues as the district, even though our program isn't run by the district in terms of enrollment and in terms of capacity. As you guys probably know, there aren't any other group after-school programs in the town that serve large groups. I passed around just some data on some communities that surround Belmont, and as you can see, there are a variety of different kinds of programs, both provided in schools and often provided out of schools. We included the capacity information, so you just had some data on the size of those programs, as well as the school enrollment for each school. I actually just got access to some data late in the day that I'm happy to email, so in the greater Boston region of the Department of Early Education and Care, which is sort of the ring that surrounds the city of Boston, there's 225 after-school programs, and ours is the third biggest at Wellington. So I actually think there's a reason why programs often are not much bigger than this in terms of the challenges that a program faces, in terms of, again, always balancing what the individual kid needs with what the program is able to provide. So I've heard a lot of recent discussions about sort of keeping, either keeping the way things are or maybe centralizing the provider, and I think I would just like to caution us to not decide prematurely on what the options are for our town. It's really important to me, and I think I speak for a lot of parents, that this process be transparent, that it be open and that it be inclusive, and I hope that there can be some sort of group formed with a variety of stakeholders to really look at all of the available options, the pros and cons of each option, and then maybe making a recommendation about next steps moving forward. I don't think this is an impossible challenge, I think I've seen through my rather limited time living in Belmont, you know, we build pools, we build playgrounds, we probably build a library, and I think coming together, again, I think it's really important that we're not divisive. I have no interest in criticizing another program, but I think we have felt like we are being criticized, and that's why we really wanted to hear, you know, just make sure you have the facts and that you're hearing our voice, so that's all. Thank you.
My name is Susan Fletcher, and I live on Longdale Street. I only became, I'm a grandparent, and I only became aware of this very pressing issue because my daughter and her husband and my two grandchildren, one to be a kindergartener and the other to be a second grader, hopefully at Wellington, but they can't even apply yet because they aren't going to be here till July. But I was rather taken aback when I found out that school-age services were really not available for so many families in Belmont. My own personal background is like Amy, I have worked at the Department of Early Education and Care, I've been in policy and planning for subsidized childcare particularly for over 30 years before I retired. I want to say that I've heard wonderful things about the existing program, the quality of it and the thoughtfulness of the staff, but I think that the demand and the need for working parents really is huge. I mean, there's a little, you know, the neighborhood apps that, we have this Good Neighbors, and we've had this lengthy discussion, and there are people who've been on the waitlist with three children who are working parents, who have no, you know, outside help for that. It means a one parent works later, or they work in shifts, or, so it seems like a very, very difficult situation, and from my perspective, being new to it all, my questions really have been, what are the barriers to expansion at the school? Again, from a child-centered point of view, school-based services at school are infinitely better for the child, and better for the parent who's not been worrying, oh, did my kid get on the bus, where are they going to get off? I worked at the Department of Social Services when childcare was housed there, there have been numerous problems with transportation, so I just would caution us to think about that. I don't know where the barriers lie. Is it that within the school, for instance, Wellington, I've heard there are 600 children during the day, albeit it is much preferable for school-age program to have their own space, absolutely, it's easier for everybody, but as a partial solution along the way, there are many programs that share space. The teachers leave and the after-school comes in, and there is shared space for that period of time. There are problems with that, the quality can suffer with that, it does mean everybody has to work together to make that work, but I think that, from my perspective, that would clearly be at least the initial steps that could be taken in terms of trying to meet this demand of parents who've been on that waitlist for so long. I mean, think about your own families, it creates tremendous strain on them. So, I mean, as I say, it would be helpful to me as a planner to know, is it the teachers who are having, not wanting to have shared space and what their concerns might be about that? Is there something one could do to make sure that, you know, there was cleaning that took place afterwards? There are many school systems where they have both designated space and shared space, for instance, Brookline Schools, all of the school age is based in the schools, some of the classrooms are shared, some are designated. So I would encourage us to at least look at what the barriers are and think about creative solutions, and if it does mean someplace else, then, and the barriers are so insurmountable that that is the answer, then I think we should all work together for that. But I do think that, as I say, school-based services for after-school are pretty good for kids and parents, so thank you.
Hi, my name is Adam Keison, I live on 296 Concord Ave, and I also empathize with this, with the points, I'm a parent in Wellington, and I also empathize with the point that we just made and with what Emily said, that it's a very hard situation for us working parents. We have, I have a first grader in the kindergarten next year. I'm sure that the after-school program at Wellington is wonderful for those who can get in. So for me, you know, from my perspective, it's not available, I was not able to get in last year, and it's also not equal in the sense that, once I'm out of that lottery, I'm out for five years, which means that for my family, we need to find babysitters, arrangements, driving from, you know, end of town to another end of town, with significant strain on the family life and obviously on family expenses as well. So I just want to emphasize with that point that it's, it's really hurting sort of parents, unavailability and inequality of this current situation. Thank you.
I'm Emily Peterson, I live at 22 Glenneal Road. I'm a happy recipient of Wellington aftercare, and I, sorry, I didn't plan on making a statement today, but I wanted to empathize with the parents who didn't get in because I couldn't imagine how you deal with it. But I also want to say that I think a yearly lottery would be disruptive for everyone because you might give up your sitter and then you have to get it again after one year of getting aftercare, and that's not the solution, the solution should be space for everyone. I think space for everyone is the solution, and that's what we should push for, so I feel your pain and I'm on board, but I just wanted to make that point, that I think we should aim for more space for everybody rather than disruption for everyone.
So I think in the interest of time, we'll have one more citizen's comment, and then, perfect.
And one of the grandmothers here tonight, so everybody watch out, okay?
I was deferring, I just wanted to make a statement on behalf of Baystate if we have time, so.
I'll be brief.
My name is Linda Oats, I live on Payson Road, and I'm a happy 40-year resident and continue to pay my taxes, happily sent both my kids through the school system, and I'm here to tell you, I doubt that any public school child that moves in And I'm here to tell you, I doubt that any public school child that moves into Belmont would be banned from the school. But that same public school child will be prohibited from needy, rational after-care in the school petitioned by parents who need the help. So, my perspective is, no child should be turned down. If that means you've got to, you know, get the pitchforks and the flaming torches, and, you know, shoot something over the bow of the boat, go ahead and do it. But we have more and more school-age kids moving into Belmont. To live in this town, if you're not, you know, a million-dollar baby, then you're out there working two jobs, and everybody knows it, okay? The people who can stay home and be stay-home parents with their kids are fortunate, okay? Maybe they are survivors of a dot-com bubble somehow, I don't know. But the fact of the matter is, most people have to work, children need care. What better place to do it than your school? That's all I can say about that. I'm just so upset with this whole thing.
So, Lisa, is it okay?
Yeah, why don't we have our final two comments?
Hi, I'm Jessie Bennett, Jessica Bennett. I live at 15 Trobridge Street. And I'm here, I'm a member of the Board of the Belmont After School Enrichment Collaborative. And we just wanted to make a brief statement. The Belmont After School Enrichment Collaborative is aware that there is a concern that Basic's intentions around the after-school crisis is an effort to take over programs in a hostile or aggressive way. As after-school parents ourself, we recognize the pride that comes with all of our beloved programs, and understand the urge to defend something if you think it's under attack. We don't want to go in and take over where we're not wanted, and that's the gist of this. As we recently noted in a statement on our website, we believe that a comprehensive plan led by Belmont Public Schools will provide broadest, most equitable access to programming, be most cost-effective for families, keep as many students as possible in programs in their neighborhood schools where individual needs can be met, and foster alignment with school values, and enhance communication with school faculty, so that our out-of-school time programs are part of a network of support aimed at positive student outcomes. The fax is outlined by Superintendent Phelan in his March 26 emails to parents. Email to parents is precisely Basic's understanding of the facts of the situation. And we thank the superintendent for being proactive and offering clarity to the community. We will continue our constructive conversations with the other after-school programs, the Belmont Public Schools, ad hoc parent groups, and dozens of concerned individual parents and caregivers, united in a common and collaborative desire to provide the best services for Belmont families. We look forward to helping find a solution. And I thank you, John, for having, I personally have been in, I was in the conversation in the fall. I was at the Policy Subcommittee meeting, and I really appreciate the attention that's being paid. I mean, personally, I got, I was interested in this issue just because I, my heart went out to parents who have been struggling to find care, so... And I think it's an issue of equity and access in our community, and trying to make sure that all families are able to, you know, make ends meet in this town, which is expensive and hard to live in. And so that women don't feel the need to stay home because they don't have adequate care for their children, I think it's truly a feminist issue. And so, I feel very passionately about it that we need to, and I'm speaking personally right now. I feel very passionately about it that we need to find a way forward on this issue that serves all of our families. Thanks.
Erin Libian, 38, Unity Ave. So, as most of you, I think, know, I do my homework, I gather data, and then I report back to you on the issues that I hear on the street. Not like Franklin Tucker, I don't do it media-wise. I do it kind of, you know, under the scenes. I have to agree with absolutely everybody here that clearly there's an issue with lack of space for our students, and of course, the increase in enrollment. And I get that you guys are solving that. Hopefully, if the MSBA approves the building for the high school, we can, in five years, solve this. But in the meantime, we're going to struggle. So, what I propose is that we find a solution, whether off-site, which has its transportation logistical nightmare issues, or elsewhere, to help the parents, the overflow, if you will. I also wanted to let you know, I'm a Wellington parent, but in my discussions, I spoke with a Butler representative who loves their after-care program. And I spoke to many parents who also love that after-care program. So, I want to let you know that there are independent after-care programs that have their fists up, ready to guard against releasing our after-care. I also, John, you know this. I truly believe that each of our staff that are on after-care at each of the elementary schools need to know right now, if not yesterday, that they are protected, and it's not just for one year. They are protected for five years. Anything less than that is absolutely unacceptable. These people, and, John, I've heard you say it before, we're looking for a high school principal, I'm sorry, an elementary school principal, now a high school principal, and right now is the prime opportunity for teachers to look for jobs. I'm not losing my after-care teachers. I'm one of many who are going to fight about this. And we're not going to take no, we're not going to take standardizing, we're not going to take any other answer other than, we'll help, we'll offer another program that maybe overflow can attend, but we're going to leave your independent after-care programs very well intact for the next five years. With that, I thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody who took the time to come this evening and share your thoughts and feelings. I think childcare is one of the most challenging issues in our country, really, not just our town. So, much appreciated. And I will hope that the information you hear tonight will provide some answers to some of the questions and concerns that you have. And then, as always, we encourage people to contact us if you have additional questions. So, let's see, moving on. So, all I really wanted to say, there were so many things we could mention on our website, which is always packed, but just wanted to give a quick shout-out to the FBE for a phenomenal fundraising event. As always, I'm sort of thrown off with where we are in terms of the calendar because of our snowstorms and missing our first meeting. I think we've had to call for snow in at least five years. But thank you so much to the Foundation for Belmont Education, to community members who participated in that fundraising effort, either in person or online, or however we did that. It's truly a wonderful resource to the community, so thank you. And we do not have a student representative report.
Sure. Before I do my after-school report, I'll do my superintendent's report. I want to congratulate first and foremost all of our students who participated in winter athletics. The season has ended. We have spring athletics at the high school starting with students working out in the cafeteria, in the fieldhouse, the parking lot not quite on field yet, but we'll get them on field soon. All of our all-state music students who did fantastic in middle school and high school over the last few weeks, and our Globe all-scholastic art contest winners from middle school and high school that were also in the Boston Globe last week. We had a nine-to-five play at the high school, so we'd like to congratulate the students who participated. Ezra Flam, our teacher who does a great job, and Drama of the high school. And we'd also like to thank the fire department as we had a bit of a fire interruption on Saturday night in the five hundred or so fallen, parents who were in attendance had to step out for a bit and come back. So, we thank the fire department for working with us and fixing the panel over the weekend, and having school yesterday and today without incident. As many of you know, we did have a walkout with our students last week. We'd like to thank the students, and the staff, and the administration who worked collaboratively to organize that for our middle school and high school students. We're very, very thankful to our police and fire departments who did this work with our students, teachers, and administration in a very safe and thoughtful way. We are glad that our students were able to partake in a very unique learning opportunity, and able to voice their opinion and work with their teachers and their administrators to do it in a way that was safe, and, but able to create a nice learning outcome in the end. As alluded to earlier in the discussion, we have two principal searches that are active and ongoing right now, one for the Wellington School. We have three finalists that were interviewed by the parent group, leadership group, and staff group over the last week. And one of those three finalists, or two of those three finalists will make their way to Assistant Superintendent Darius and I for final interviews as well. The Belmont High School Search Committee met today and interviewed folks as well. Both of these search committees were given all the resumes, decided which candidates would be interviewed, and which candidates would be forwarded to the last round to meet with parents, and leadership, and teachers, and Janice, and myself. So, we look forward to the finalists coming to the Belmont High School community sometime next week, and meeting them, and I encourage everyone to take part in the afternoon and/or night sessions, to ask your questions, and get a good feel for the candidates, as these are both very, very important positions. I also want to say thank you to the school committee and the Belmont Educators Association. We ratified contracts for our teachers and our instructional aides last week at a school committee meeting. We're very happy that that work is done. So, we are in the first year of a three-year contract with our teachers, and that's just good news for all of us moving forward, so we can move the work forward with our educators, and we're thankful for that as well.
All right, thank you. So, we're going to move to our first item of major business, which is our after-care presentation.
Thank you.
We have the exhibit, Exhibit A. And as I mentioned, this will go up on our school district website tomorrow morning. Of course.
Me too? Get my middle school principal voice out. Stay to the right, get in line, keep your hands to yourself. It's the best job I ever had, middle school principal. So, my name is John Phelan. I'm here to talk about this very important subject of after-care for our families. We have been meeting with the after-school providers for a little bit over a year. We have had some small meetings with parents. We have gotten together on several occasions to commiserate on the challenges that we share around lack of space and increased enrollment. For the public to know, and I think they do, that our enrollment increases by over a hundred students a year over the last six years, and is projected to do so for the next ten years. We have modular classrooms at the middle school, we have modular classrooms at the high school, and thankfully, we were able to secure modular classrooms for the Burbank School. So, we are trying to increase our footprint to fit all the students that continue to fill our schools. We're happy to have everybody, we just need more space to have them and engage them appropriately. When we meet with our after-school providers, we're hearing that they are having the same kind of challenges around space that they need to have insecure in a way that is able to secure licensure for certain amounts of students in their public school. So, tonight, after meeting with these folks, we decided to really want to put this on the school committee agenda. So, we met with the Policy Subcommittee two weeks ago, and we presented to some parents that were in attendance, and also to the Policy Subcommittee, just the assumptions that we're working, but the situation that we're in, and some of the short-term and long-term solutions that we'd like to explore. There was a significant amount of email traffic and social networking, and maybe ten years ago, when my kid's a little, it would have been talking on the soccer field, but it seems to be social media talk about certain aspects of this. So, I sent an email out yesterday to try to clarify a little bit where we were with the facts of this work and how we're trying to move it forward. This presentation will be a little more information, and our goal is to just make sure that we're all on the same page about the work we're trying to do on behalf of this challenge. So, first of all, we want to just identify who we're working with. Each day in our schools, we have wonderful programs that are building-based programs located in our schools, and that have been for a period of time. At the Burbank School, we have Basic. At the Butler School, we have Butler Extended Day. At the Wellington, we have Wellington Student Care. And at the Winbrook Schools for Children, serve our Winbrook community. Each one of these programs is overseen by the Board, that is a product of the PTO, and ultimately, the Board of the After-School Programs. So, these are locally hired, locally contracted, and locally operated programs. Each school has their own provider. They're hired and governed by the school-based boards. All the program and organizational decisions are made by these boards in their work at the provider. It is news over the last few months, to the point of Emily, that you only can be on the Board if you have a student in the program. So, that's an interesting dynamic, that is, that's interesting news to consider as it relates to, how do we give voice to other folks in making sure that our Boards are able to hear all the constituents in their building? I'm not going to take questions right now.
I just wanted to make a question.
That's okay, and I'm not going to take questions right now.
Okay, that's okay. There's nothing wrong.
We look at, what is the capacity of each one of our schools? What is the enrollment of our schools, and how many students attend after-school program? At the Butler, we have program enrollment of 172, with a program license capacity of 140, and a school enrollment of 393. If you note that the enrollment for the program is above the capacity, that's because some folks take two days, some folks are three days, but they can only have 130 students a day. In the next three schools, we have Winbrook with 138 students in the program, 140 that they have a license for, 487 that they have in their school each day. At the Wellington, there are 241 students who participate in the program, a license for 170, 571 students that are enrolled, and I believe that number is the K-through-four number, not the pre-K-through-four number. At the Burbank, we have 243 students that take part in the after-school program with a license for 180, and they have a student population of 374. At the last conversation I had with our building principals, which was last week, we did find out through their reporting that the only school at this point in time with students that are not able to enter the program is the Wellington. There were some waitlist issues, I believe, at Winbrook, and there were some waitlist issues, I believe, at Butler at the beginning of the year when I met with the providers in the fall. But as we know, and as was reported tonight, there's a lot of comings and goings in some of the enrollment slots, and it's been reported to me by our principals that that is no longer a challenge at the Winbrook or at the Butler. And the main challenge that we have is for the Wellington School. We all know that the enrollment that we've seen over the last six years has had corresponding pressure on our back-to-school, on our after-school programs, and we are working to increase the capacity, even if it's incrementally, at any or all of our schools. We have given principals the directive to meet with our teachers, which they have, and the teachers are open to this conversation, to meet with the program directors, which they have, and they are open to this conversation, about what kind of space would they ultimately like to have, and what are some of the spaces that we can provide. At the Wellington, which is the main subject that we have here tonight, Principal Stewart has reported that she at least has two more spaces that we believe we can contribute. And we are meeting with the Board of the Wellington After School Program this week to talk about those spaces, and potentially, any more that we can talk with the teachers about in sharing spaces. Dedicated space is hard for schools to commit because teachers are there after school, and they're working out of school in their rooms. And we're actually glad, to some extent, that they're working for some period of time in their rooms after school. We don't want them there in their five, because we want them with their own families. But they have children in after-school where they live, so they're trying to get their work done, so they can go home and be home with their family. So, we have a competing interest in the space directly after school, particularly between that three and four hour. And we also have a competing interest in how our PTOs would like to run enrichment programs, and how do we partner our after-school programming with our PTO enrichment program? And I know that some of our schools have success in teaming those two groups, so they're not competing for space, but they're actually partnering on space. So, when we are meeting with our program directors, we're sharing those best practices. The group of folks that we meet with have been very open about the things that work in their programs, and they are sharing those best practices. And I think it's a healthy thing just to get those folks together, even if we didn't have this challenge together. There is no doubt that our space needs will change in five years, and that they will be in a better position than they are right now. But it is really, really clear, and it not lost on me or the folks at this table, that that is a long time away when you don't have childcare. Five years is a whole elementary career, and a family cannot wait five years for the new school to be built and have corresponding space open up at our other schools. We have had conversations with the directors about partnering and going out and looking for off-site space. I believe two of those directors reported to me that they did do that. I don't think there's any suitable space off-site at this point in time that we can access. We have volunteered to say that we will partner in transportation, if we can, and around logistics, to get folks places that might be beyond their school, to see if we can support that, and we will do that. And we will do that if those spaces arise, or if that need comes up, we don't mind partnering on that. So we hope that the process for dialogue that we've had in our meetings with the directors and the small group of parents where we share best practices, identify challenges, and discuss short-term and long-term goals, we believe it was a good work to go through. And our current short-term goals, as outlined in my letter yesterday, for next year, we are keeping this as a locally governed process. And to my knowledge, no one is asking their provider to leave, because that's their choice, and to my knowledge, no one is doing that. The school department's not advocating that anybody take anybody over, that's not in anybody's purview, but the board's purview. That's the board's job to decide who their provider is, and they have contracts and they have arrangements with those groups. The school department's not intervening in that way. We do seek incremental success in adding space. I don't know if we can add 70 spaces at Wellington, but we should certainly try to add more square footage so we can go back to the requirements at the state and ask them to renew the license at a higher level, and we are working with the Wellington group to do that. We are working with all four buildings to do that, because space in any school is helpful space across the town. We hope to align our communication with the after-school programming and how we enroll our students. We actually are trying to enroll our kindergarten folks and have the alignment with the enrollment into registration for after-school programs. And one of the wrinkles in this process is that when we enroll students, it doesn't mean that you automatically get into your home district school anymore, because sometimes the schools are full. So some parents are very, very challenged by, do I have to put a deposit on my home school, and should I put a deposit somewhere else in case I get assigned to that school? We have gotten an agreement from all four providers that they will give deposits back, and no one would be left harmed financially by putting deposits in two different places. We tried to get them to see if they could have one deposit system, so no one had to actually put out more than one check, but we couldn't get the organizations to agree, and I respectfully understand why at the short period of time. So we will continue to provide oversight of the contracts that we provide the after-school providers, the insurance that they must provide us, and ensure that they have the licensure to be in our schools and operate, and we will leave the governing up to the board at each of the schools. In the long term, we offer to provide logistical support and potentially transportation support if the opportunity arises to alleviate the waitlist at any of the schools. We do believe that moving students between building and building or a centralized site is a short-term solution if we can find one, but ideally, we'd like to see students take their after-school care in their own building as well. The transitional piece for us is also a worry and a challenge, and we know it would be for the schools and a worry for our parents. We were very open about some of the options in the long run that we would explore, and I think when some folks say, when you say this, you might make some of the program folks nervous, we're saying this because we are absolutely looking at the long term, because we owe it to the parents to at least explore these options. The options could be, could the district run this work? The other option is, could one vendor run this work? And the other option is just to keep it the way we have it and just try to incrementally make inroads on providing more space at each one of our schools to see if we can alleviate the waitlist. I don't know with the volume of parents that we have, that it's feasible that we will ever get enough slots in the current school space that we have to accommodate every single parent. And I would never want to say or leave anybody with the impression that we can fix everything for every family. I'm not sure that that's feasible. I hope it is, but I want to be really transparent that I'm not sure that can happen. When we're asking all programs to scale up if we find more space, the scaling up for them requires not only finding the more space that has to be shared and probably rotated, it's finding more staff, and it's scaling up their organization, and maintaining the quality of their program that I think is the balance here. And one of the reasons why, and I appreciate the data from one of the parents that provided it, you can see that these programs are relatively similar in size because folks can't find staff that can actually provide this function in a quality way, and most cities and towns provide alternative sites like YMCA's, Boys and Girls Clubs, or other nonprofit groups that actually are in town that can provide that service. We do have students that actually take after-school care in programs that are outside the district, and we have buses that come and pick them up at two or three of our schools. And so we do have other outside programs that come to our schools, pick up our children, and take them to other programs, so that alternative programming does exist currently in the district. So this will be a long-term piece that we will look at, but it will not interrupt next year's work with our current providers. And out of respect for our current providers, we have to give very, very clear notice if we intend to do anything different, and at this point in time, we do not. We plan on looking at this work, seeing if we can identify spaces in the town, seeing if we can incrementally create space within our schools, finding how much room that they want to ultimately have, and see if they can scale up to it, and see if we can create success at our building-based options. So in summary, we will leave our local boards in place to hire and to oversee and make the decisions with their providers. We will not provide any changes to our providers next year, because that's the building-based choice. Incremental increase in capacity is our goal, we're working on it as we speak. We appreciate the work that the teachers have done with their principals and the providers will be doing with the teachers and the principals, and we'll be trying to align our communication as best we can. We realize that all this will result in some added space next year, and we unfortunately will say out loud that there may be families who may not get space next year. But we're working towards that goal, and we are exploring some of the bigger options as a district, because we feel we owe it to our parents to partner in this work as best we can.
Any questions or comments from the school committee?
I just wanted to add that the policy subcommittee did begin having these discussions. We're going to be meeting on April the 4th to discuss it further, because unfortunately, our meeting time ended and we didn't have time to get into all this, but we did just start sort of getting into a discussion as to the role of the school committee in this, and that will, that discussion will continue at our next meeting.
I have one question, which is just as part of the work and conversation with the after-care programs, if there's any kind of needs survey going out, you know, recognizing some folks aren't on the boards or part of an after-care program, I wondered if there might be just a general needs assessment out to the district.
To send out a survey to the district to get a general, across all the elementaries?
Yeah. Because I imagine there may be lots of people who aren't currently in an after-care program, who've come up with alternatives, maybe they are happy with that, maybe they'd like to be in it, maybe there are people in the program who'd like to be out of the program, or easier to do a smaller care facility, having a better idea would be helpful.
So that could be maybe an outcome of the work that we do with the policy subcommittee as a first step.
Can you explain a little bit more of the limitation in space? Clearly during the day, the schools accommodate more students than the after-school programs do. So what are the limitations, and why is it not possible to utilize the classrooms more specifically? Is that a Belmont Public School limitation, or is that a regulatory limitation? What's involved in that?
So I think that the, I don't know the exact regulatory expectation for dedicated space, but there's a need for some dedicated space and some space that could probably rotate. So we're working with our teachers to see if we can use classrooms. The programs do access classrooms that teachers have to vacate, at some schools, maybe more than others. The after-school programs have access to the gyms, the libraries, the conference rooms, maybe the art room, and different spaces like that, so they utilize those spaces. We are working with folks to see if we can maybe rotate some of the program use of space to partner with teachers who might want to say, I can stay after school Monday, Tuesday, and you can have my room Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, but there's some programmatic challenge to that that we want to make sure that people understand. So I think that that dialogue is happening, and that might increase some of the space that we have. It should be said that I, and I'm looking at Janice Darius, our assistant superintendent, it's very difficult for the school department to have staff meetings and curriculum development and professional development, because we don't have anywhere to go either. And I know that's not as big of a challenge as finding a spot for your five-year-old, because that's more important, but it just, it puts an exclamation point on the true lack of after-school space, that the wellness program that we try to do for staff, that we struggle to do, the after-school meetings that we have, we are trying to defer to the after-school programs so we don't get in the way, but we do actually ask the after-school program at times to move so we can have meetings on in professional development. So it certainly is a challenge in terms of the space. Yes?
One other question or thought, which is, I know people have looked at existing space within the town, but I wonder to what extent our selectmen and planning board may facilitate or make it easier as part of town planning to develop space or incentivize space be developed, similar to other towns that have a YMCE or YMCA or Boys and Girls Club. And I think, you know, it's naturally that we receive this kind of question, because we're the schools, but it is beyond our, I mean, it's not just our scope, and so I think taking it to the other entities in town that have some power to do something would be helpful.
I think we should put that in one of the discussion points at our policy meeting.
Are individual programs looking for additional space, or is the administration exploring the space options? Who's spearheading that effort?
So currently, individual program directors, and I think two had partnered at one point to look for space jointly, to see if there's any space in the town, and I think some of the space that was found was not big enough to be cost-effective, maybe 12 students, three days a week, not wide swaths of space that could accommodate a large enough group to make the program connected and make it worthwhile and cost-effective. When we looked for space before we got the modules at the Chenery and before we got the modules at the Burbank, we went out and looked for space. We looked for space for our preschool, we went to St. Joe's, we went to other places to look for space that we could use during the day, and we were obviously unsuccessful in that as well. There just doesn't seem to be that kind of, that kind of space available in the town, those types of structures that would provide open space, that would support students in after-school care, or in our case, during-the-day school care, which we were looking for at that time.
It has a...
It's amazing to me that it's such an entrepreneurial opportunity in terms of supply in America. Our supply and demand problem is usually solved pretty quickly, so, but we will, I think people want to make sure that the search for space and the review of these options is done in a way that has the voice of many folks, so folks don't feel like it's been done without their feedback. Surveying folks, I think, will be something that we would want to do, openly looking for space and talking openly about these options. I think that right now, as an example, if the schools took over all the after-care tomorrow, we would still have the same challenges around providing enough space, and that there really wouldn't be much of a gain there. And even if we asked one vendor to take it over, we still would have challenges with space. So those aren't always challenges that are solved in those ways, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't explore them and learn from unpacking them and seeing what they look like. And so we will look through each one of those options. Those three options have been kind of discussed at the table with the providers, and I think the parents want to know more about them, and they deserve to have them explored, so we'll do that.
Forgive me, just one final question on options. Did we explore the use of the high school and the middle school as an alternative location for programs?
So the middle school is, has an after-school program that's run by one of the providers that the school's...
Capacity.
A capacity. And we did think about using parts of the high school at one point in time, namely, the cafeteria, but it's full after-school. It's not a daily dedicated space that we can provide. The high school is a busy place from 3:00 to 9:00 o'clock at night. The middle school's a busy place from 3:00 to 6:00 o'clock at night, and so we don't have corresponding space at other schools.
All right. We will move on then to our next item of major business, which is our vote on school choice. This is an annual vote that we take pursuant to Mass. General Chapter 76, Mass. General Law, Chapter 76, Section 28. So we're going to propose a vote in the affirmative to decline. That makes it hard to hear. I feel like I'm not talking that softly, but, okay. So every year, we take this vote in, perhaps? John, do you want to tell us what we're voting for when we decline participation?
Sure. Every, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts asks every town to decide on whether or not they want to be a school-choice district. The majority of school-choice districts are in the western part of the state, and they are usually municipalities or school districts that are losing enrollment, and they choose to try to take in students from surrounding towns as a way to creatively increase their enrollment to support their school district. We decide to not take part in this because our enrollment is so high. Most districts in the eastern part of the metropolitan Boston area do not take part in this program for the same reasons. So we do not have school choice currently, and I do not recommend school choice moving forward.
Any questions? All right, so if there's no discussion or questions, we have in front of us the wording for the vote. So is there a motion to, in accord with Mass. General Law, Chapter 76, Section 128, unanimously vote to decline participation in school choice for the 2018-19 school year?
All right, can I?
A second?
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor of declining?
All right, aye.
Thank you. Unanimous vote. It's always funny to vote affirmative to decline.
To decline?
Yeah, okay. Next, we have another vote, which is on the rugby trip to Spain if I played rugby.
Great. Actually, I'm not sure this would be a vote, because it was going to be a vote, but we didn't...
We'll review it.
We weren't here on March 13th, so it's, it should be a vote the next time we meet.
Thank you. So you've had an opportunity to review. Are there any points, Janice, that you think we should be aware of? Is this a new, I assume since rugby's...
I would just say that our rugby coaches have really done a nice job of creating quite a community among the rugby players, and they have for quite a few, taken quite a few trips, which I think are really extraordinary experiences for the students who participate. I have high regard for the work that they do, and the organization that they work with has done great work, and so, and who wouldn't want to go with a bunch of rugby players to Spain?
And it's nice that there's actual games and practices, so it's an opportunity for the cultural...
Yes. The organization that they work with always arranges not only cultural visits, but also the opportunity to work with local teams and meet kids who have the same passion for the sport wherever they travel.
You need one more chaperone?
Yo hablo español, pero...
Two quick pieces of data about our rugby, boys and girls rugby teams have been finally included in the Massachusetts Athletic MA...
MI, Interscholastic Athletic Association.
MIAA, so now they are formal teams. We have an extraordinarily large group of young men and young women that participate in rugby. It's amazing. And ironically, last year, we have had state championships for our boys teams. Last year was the first girls' team to ever win a state title in any state in the United States, and it was Belmont High Girls. So congratulations late to our girls' team, but they were the first public school to win a state championship in the sport of rugby in the history of the United States, which is a pretty cool thing. Hopefully, they can replicate that in the 2018, no pressure, girls.
Great. And I know, you know, in the proposal, fundraising efforts will be coordinated for potential scholarships and aid, so that's always helpful. Any other questions or comments?
And this is for next April, so the students have a chance to organize themselves for all the fundraising opportunities.
All right. Actually, it does say in the memo, April 2018, but it's not April 2018.
That's correct.
April 2019. I apologize for that error. And it is part of the school committee policy that any international trip does need to come to you by May, so that's why you're in the memo next year.
It is correct on the formal disclosure. All right, so we'll revisit this then at our next meeting. Next, our transportation update. You have a, an exhibit study. Tony, are you guiding us through?
So I'm thankful to have Tony DeColigero with us tonight to present on our transportation. As you know, this could be the night of growing pains for the Belmont Public Schools. We'll... We'll show you all of our struggles as we attempt to try to work with families for our after school programming and space. We have added two buses over the last two years to support transporting as many students possible to our schools at the elementary, middle, and high school level. When we add those buses, it's a cost of the budget of about $65,000 to $70,000. And we are truly a small town by square mile, but a high-volume town in terms of students taking the buses to school, which is great. We have them in buses. They're not walking. They're safe. And so we're glad to be able to do that. Tony and his department have looked at trying to do this more efficiently and with an eye down the road to knowing that more students are coming to try to make routes that actually have an infrastructure that we can use year to year, that can support more students on each bus, so we can actually be more efficient and effective with our bus route. So I'll let Tony take it from here. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you. So each year, we review our busing operations to look to see where we can improve it. For those, for any bus parents in the audience or folks watching, you know that for this current school year, we opened up busing registration online last June. That was the second year for busing registration online, which was a great benefit to parents. It was a great benefit for the business office. It allowed us to get the registrations in much sooner versus sometime in mid-July or later. It allowed us to set the bus routes sooner to kind of economize the paths that the buses travel. We're ready to take that next step now to really what we feel is optimizing the routes. And so every year, we kind of, at the end of the year, we look at the busing function and the routes, and we kind of look to see what lessons we can glean. So when we do that, we consider our enrollment, our current ridership, resource availability. Superintendent Phelan indicated, two years ago, we had six buses, which was the norm for many, many years. Last year, we added a seventh bus. This year, we added an eighth bus. We're budgeting for next year to continue with eight buses as well. We always want to consider vehicle traffic. As we know, we all know that that can be very challenging, sometimes especially during the morning rush hour. We want to consider pickup and arrival times, and of course, student safety is always a priority. And so when we consider primarily the year-over-year increase in total student enrollment and also the increased demand for bus services, our examination of our busing operations told us that we can improve, we can provide a better level of service by strategically reconfiguring the bus stops, so that there will actually be fewer stops, but they'll be in strategic areas, kind of more centralized, that'll really make the whole busing function operate more efficiently. And this is for changes for next school year. For the remainder of this school year, everything will be as it is right now. So if we just take a minute and actually think about everything that's involved when a school bus actually makes a stop. Of course, that big yellow school bus has to actually come to a complete stop, turns on yellow flashes, then red flashes, and that stop sign comes out. The driver has to wait for cars to stop in both directions, and then over the door, the students make their way in the bus, find a seat. The driver shuts off all the flashes, pulls the stop sign, and then goes off again. Even just to say that out loud, it takes a fair amount of time. And if you've got that over, in some cases, dozens of stops on a particular route, that really kind of adds to the time that the route takes. So again, by reducing the number of stops, we significantly reduce the amount of time that it takes for the bus to complete the entire route and to get to school or in the afternoon to make the drop off in the afternoon. So here's an example of a bus stop, a bus route that we have now. This, I just happened to pick the Wellington School. This is bus six in the morning for the Wellington. We could have picked any one of, any number of buses. You can see there are 22 stops on that bus. I can tell you right now, because I was very curious to know, the Wellington and bus six, there are 40 students that take that bus in the morning, so there are 22 stops for those 40 students. And you can see, if you look at the pathway of the route, you know, we're literally taking the long and winding road to get through that part of town. And you can see where it says finished, that's not even the Wellington School, that's just the last stop, and from there, the bus makes its way to the school. And if we were to compare that to how we will be configuring the routes, how we have reconfigured the routes for next year, you'll see it's a much smoother process. First of all, it's reduced from 22 to 11 stops. You can see just that the route itself is much more simplified. And if anyone sort of were to toggle back and forth between the two drawings, everything... Tony, what about the students that were serviced in that part of the town, that the streets that the bus isn't driving on anymore? Well, literally, all the students are still serviced on their particular side street in this example. Instead of walking to the middle of the street, they've got to come to the end of the street, and they wanted to have to walk a short distance. And we're not concerned by that because ours, our expectation is that for elementary students, and especially younger elementary students in grades K to 2, we would expect parents to accompany students to the bus stop and to receive them at the bus stop. So again, this, in this particular example, the reconfiguration is around some of the side streets, and it really streamlines the bus. You know, thinking about all the different steps that a bus has to do to stop and start again, this cuts that sort of overhead of a bus route in half. And so that's one example of the changes that we're making. So what does this mean for parents and students? Well, currently, sort of on the left there, you can see that there are routes that have over 40 stops on them, believe it or not. And of course, those additional stops prolong the time that the bus is in route. Typically, during the first couple of weeks of school, the bus is taking a long time to get there. That's in part because of the route, in part because there's students getting re-acclimated with the bus. There are also students on the bus for the first time, and we certainly understand that. But we believe that by reducing the number of stops, we hope to gain enough ground, no pun intended, that not only will mitigate, but hopefully even eliminate the buses being late at the first couple of weeks of school. Up until now, routes have been reconfigured each year, stop by stop, to kind of draw out those routes through the neighborhoods. And ultimately, again, that delays the start time to have such long routes. The benefits for the future, beginning next year, as we talked about, we're decreasing the travel time in town because we'll have fewer stops. And in some cases, we're cutting the number of stops in half in the example we just showed. Again, we expect the buses to get to school sooner to avoid buses getting to school late and in the afternoon, excuse me, for the buses to arrive at their afternoon stops sooner as well, which is a challenge as well. I know that parents have struggled sometimes waiting for those afternoon stops to be made, and we certainly understand that. We're trying to address that. And also, with the new methodology, with the minimal amount of annual changes we're making to the routes, the routes will be consistent from year to year, and it'll help parents and students in understanding where the routes will be and for planning for how they'll get their children to school. I will mention that there are some areas of town that there'll be slightly more review each year to the routes, and that's in the interest of student safety. There are some areas of town that don't have sidewalks, that it can't necessarily be the same stops year in and year out. There's still sort of ranges that we work in. It won't be kind of hand-done every year, but we'll, so it's the balance of optimizing the routes, minimizing the time, and ensuring student safety. But the vast majority of the routes in town will be set with minimal changes from year to year. As far as the timeline, this work was reviewed and completed in January, and the changes will be posted to the district website. We expect to have the changes submitted by the end of this week so they can be posted. And we're sending a letter out to parents this week that'll be going out Friday. Get it over the weekend or early next week. And that's going to the parents of all students who take the bus now. And it's also going to the parents of all fourth grade students in anticipation that some of them, when they go to Channery, when they'll be taking the bus where in the past they hadn't been. And just as a reminder, bus registration will open for the 2018-19 school year. It'll Monday, June 4th, and we encourage students, we encourage parents to register right away. A number of the buses fill up, and registering really is the best way to ensure a seat on the bus. And so I want to take a moment just to acknowledge the work of the staff and the business office. In most districts that offer busing, they have an entire transportation department with the director and support staff. In Belmont, it's my executive secretary, Julia Rizzo, who does it as one of many hats that she wears, and we certainly appreciate that. And she's done a great job just reconfiguring the routes in a way that they're sensible, logical, and reasonable, and it'll serve the district now. And as we grow, as Superintendent indicated, we'll be able to take on additional capacity of students and not having to configure the routes. Now, as to what capacity's still on the buses, that in some cases, that may be a different situation, but the routes can be set. So we're excited about these changes, and we wanted to present it to the school committee so the committee would be aware and to give the parents initial preview of what's coming up. And then we're receiving the letters by early next week.
Any questions or comments?
I just have. I would think, no, the cost probably isn't that different, that this would maybe save them gas a little bit or whatever. Has there been consideration given? Because I know a lot of people don't take the bus because of the cost. And in thinking about these new routes and all that, was there ever a discussion about the cost and hopefully increasing, I mean, we would have to get a new bus, but increasing participation to sort of decrease traffic to the schools?
So is, so I want to make sure that I understand the question. So ultimately, the question is increasing participation to decrease traffic, whether it's foot traffic or other vehicles coming to the schools?
Right.
And what can we do to encourage additional participation?
Right.
So it, the...
One way, I think, but...
Yeah. So conceptually, theoretically, there's probably some sweet spot to have supply and demand while those curves are crossed to have the exact correct price where we would maximize participation. I'm not sure what that is. I know, I believe it was for the 2012-13 school year, the cost was increased based on the fact, the amount that we were receiving from fees and the amount that we were budgeting from the general fund to support the busing. I think the committee knows that the busing function is supported by a combination of general fund dollars and fees from the riders. So if we reduce, so the question is, if we reduce the fee, would that increase ridership? The answer is, I'm not sure. I think it'd be difficult to determine that. I can say, sort of one factoid in this, is that a number of the buses that service the Channery are full or nearly full. So I don't know how much additional ridership we would get there. That's, that doesn't mean that we shouldn't and can't look at what that would be. I guess it'd be difficult to ascertain. I'm not sure how to call out how many people have not signed up for busing because of the cost. I can say that we, like virtually all the other fees that we charge students for fee-based programming, we offer a waiver system based on household size and income, that families can submit that request to the business office. I review that confidentially. So there is a process in place for fee relief. But, you know, I don't have the answer about how many more people would participate if the fee were to be reduced. And if we reduce the fee now, I don't know how, when we would then have to raise the fee again as the cost of busing itself increases every year. So I don't have the answer to that. I'm not sure. And then strategically, I guess we would have to think about that. I wouldn't want to get to a point to recommend fees to come down to a certain point, only to have to go back up in a short period of time after that.
It's interesting thought. So along those lines, do you know what percentage of the current students taking the bus are actually paying fees?
So anecdotally, so there are about just over 800 students that take the bus.
Okay.
And we've got 80-some-odd students receiving a waiver, whether it's full or partial waiver. So 90% of the, well, I was going to say 90% of the students that take the bus pay the fee. That's not entirely true. We are required to bus for free by state law, all students in grades K to 6, who live two miles or more from their assigned school. So I'd have to pull up the numbers to see of the 809, how many are required to bus for free, and from that remaining cohort, what percent of those folks receive a waiver? So if the entire population of students that take the bus, about a tenth of them receive a waiver. But that's, but that's not entirely the whole story because we're busing them for free by law.
Because I think your point is a good one, Susan. It is interesting. I have heard people concerned about the fees, which obviously is a challenge and a question of, is there a sweet spot, as you say, where if you lowered the fees, there might be enough incremental revenue? Would it actually offset the cost of incremental buses? Hard to say, but certainly would be interesting to look at it because that might reduce traffic and, you know, create alternatives for parents that they would appreciate. I don't know if the economics go around, but it might be interesting to go look at.
So in a real 10,000-foot view, a big yellow school bus is anywhere from $65,000 to $70,000. So if we, so we like to cap the ridership at 60 students, and I could go into a big explanation of why, even though the bus is 77 students, we only put 60 students because 77 students is three students to a seat on every seat, and that's not feasible. So we cap it at about 60 students. So real, the full fee is $575. Even if the fee were 500, I'm not saying, I'm only saying that for purposes of quick calculations. And if every student of 60 students paid the entire fee, that'd be $30,000. That wouldn't even be half of the cost of the big yellow school bus. Now, that bus would make, potentially make runs to an elementary school, Channery, and the high school. So in theory, is it possible for it to approach break even? I suppose that it is. But it's, it's not kind of a modular conversation where that we don't know that we would necessarily have 60, and then 60, and then 60 students, three times on that bus, to make up the $70,000.
So when we look at that...
But it's within the realm of possibility. I mean, it's, theoretically, it's possible if they're doing three routes that you might get a break even or get very close.
Well, there's two questions. One is, does decreased fee increase ridership? And does the district have the capacity within its routes to increase the ridership with the same amount of buses? It actually makes the increase in fee with a constant level of buses worthwhile.
Right.
There is this conversation right now about when we talk about our new upper and lower high school building, which I keep saying that differently because I want to make sure people know it's a 7 through 12 building, and do we use more buses to get students there more safely? Or do we use less buses so students can actively walk and we can create better walk pathways and bike pathways to school because it is a small town? And there's a, there's a conversation there about how we want our folks to get to school. I wasn't here when we raised fees, but I think, Tony, when we raised fees, we did see a decrease in ridership. But at the middle school, we're full. That's the biggest, that's the biggest backlog. Our middle school population is full right now, so we didn't really experience any shortfall of money. We have been, over time, in my four years, with the general fund and the revolving account fund, barely making it, I think, for that line item. I'm not sure whether it's up 30 or down 30, but there's no overflow of money in the bus revolving account, if I remember correctly. So, but it is a conversation about getting students to school safely in a bus that could reduce traffic. Those are admirable goals. We have contrasting admirable goals of having students walk and bike to school if we can create safelists to school for students to do that. And then we just have a budget issue of whether or not we can schedule and afford the amount of buses needed to do that. So it's definitely a multi-layered issue to take a look at. I'm glad we were able to add the two buses. They're well utilized. And remember now, we're actually, because of our enrollment, we're actually having students go to school outside their elementary district. So we're actually using buses to kind of cross a little bit, which might not be the, which will not present the most efficient model of transportation. But because of the situation we are in with enrollment, we are forced to kind of have students go across town. So that provides a little bit of a minus in this conversation as well. Yes?
I have a question for Tony, but I also want to say, I think when we talk about buses and safe routes, that those aren't necessarily opposite in terms of conflicting with each other. Because I think reducing traffic overall, which my fear is that the fees have increased traffic, because certainly there's a lot of congestion immediately around the schools, and I for one never want to be at the pickup or the drop off at the Channery from what I've heard. But my question for you is, how does the prioritization come for those families that don't fall in the beyond-two-mile zone or mandated service for any other reason to be on the bus? How do you, you know, is there a waiting list? How do you determine who gets priority in the, do you start from the outer ring and then move in? What's the, is there a process there?
Sure. That was a great question. So in terms of registration, I think the lion's share of the parents registered the students in June last year... students in June last year was, was right around the time that school let out, this year's even earlier in June. And so we appreciate that. I believe the only waitlist we have is, is it one or two buses at the channery? And there's, so there's a handful, there's approximately a half a dozen students that we've had on a waitlist, and odds are, we just won't have the capacity to transport those students at any point this year, unfortunately. So other than that, we haven't, we haven't really bumped into a waitlist issue. If, if the question is about cost, we do have a waiver based on household size and income, and that's anyone who, it's as simple as, straightforward as looking at a chart, you look at the number of people in the household and the household income, and if they, if they meet that particular threshold, they can receive a full or partial waiver, depending upon where that, the income falls. And as many people as qualify for that are the people that receive that reduced, or in case, in some cases, free busing. And the district just foregoes that revenue. So there's, anyone, there's no cap on the number of waivers we issue based on household size and income. I'm not sure if that's part of your question.
Anybody who's free, because they're beyond two miles, which would be the most needy students, automatically go on the bus, because that's the law.
Right.
K to, K to six, we have to provide those guys a bus. So those guys are taken care of, check the box.
Yeah.
So the fathers-traveling students automatically get a bus. They couldn't be waitlisted, because it would be against the law. Then, then the bus is filled with paying folks after that. So I think that that was your question.
Because I've heard from some folks that they don't even, they're not even eligible, like they can't get on the bus route, period, even if they want to pay.
Mm-hmm.
The bus isn't serving that street, or that...
They're within two miles.
So that, that group of people, I'm wondering how they're captured as we think about, you know, maybe it's more efficient, maybe we can make more runs, maybe there'll be other...
So we, we speak with those parents a lot, and usually they're folks who may be going to school outside their district, or they just live farther enough away from their school that might be a mile, which is far to walk or drive, but not enough to get a bus, and the bus might not go through that neighborhood, because it's just too close. So we draw circles around the schools, and we work out like this. So, so there are folks who don't have a bus that goes through the neighborhood, who say, look, just close enough not to get one, but far enough away that it's inconvenient for them to be able to access school in a way that's helpful for them, whether they don't have a car, or whether they have one car in the family and the, and one person leaves earlier or goes later. Ironically, we have such a small town in terms of square miles, four by two, I think. The bus, the legal terminology as it relates to the bus is that we can ask parents to walk up to a mile just to their stop.
Mm-hmm.
Which is kind of strange, we'd never do that, but like, that just shows you how kind of wide varying in this town. We benefit by, that's the law. So we benefit by folks probably asking them to maybe walk a block, and this is probably getting folks to walk maybe three blocks to the, to the bus. So we are trying to make it more efficient, but there is a zone around a school that's a certain distance away that would be somewhere that, that would be in the middle that wouldn't be serviced by a bus, and they would have to walk or bike or drive.
So if you could have any additional support in looking at that problem of either increasing ridership or making, what would you want to see? Like what would, what would help solve the congestion around the schools, the increasing ridership or increasing walking?
I, I don't think the bus is gonna, I think that we are, I don't think any one of those things is going to solve the congestion around the schools. If you go to the Wellington, I mean, if you go to the Wellington, the Butler, the Burbank, each one of our schools has not enough parking for the educators, no parking for parents to come and pick up children who have to go to the dentist or drop them off after the doctor. We are in a condensed neighborhood situation where if we provided no buses, then everybody would either walk or drive, and if we provided more buses, then, then it might be harder for us to pick everybody up, and we'd be looping neighborhoods and driving students a half a mile to school, which might not just make sense from a time perspective. So would, would it be a nice study for someone to do, or a graduate school student to, to map out? We have every student on a dot, we know where every student lives, we can identify what the routes are, that's why we can do the work that Tony did. Could we buy two more buses and maybe pick up more students who live closer to their schools, to get them in school by bus versus by walking? Probably. Where that saturation point is, I don't know. But adding two buses was a big piece of it. And I still think that I worry about the middle schools more than, a worry than any of the other two levels, because the high school only has, I think, a hundred and forty-seven students out of thirteen-hundred to drive the bus, which is a real low percentage, and that's just usually, that's pretty familiar to high school students. And I think some of our elementary families might use, or might be in the middle zone, that we might be able to cure a little bit of that. But I think next year, when we get more efficient with our routes, we can see how that goes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I'd really like to thank Tony and Joy, because they not only have reorganized this for this format for next year, but bringing registration online, the communication with parents, and being able to have everybody signed up early on, so they don't have to worry about it over the summer, and doing so in a way that's easy for them to access the routes, access the payment, and access signing up if they don't have to make a payment, all of that has gone very smoothly over those last two years. And I'd like to thank our tech department, who provide that customized tech support, Steve Azola and his group, who helped us with registration for kindergarten and all of our students to register for school. It's a really big deal, so thank you as well.
Thank you.
That's great.
So our next item of business, we have a sabbatical request from an educator. We need some background, this was sent to us for a review.
Sure, so we, we put this on the agenda because it's a school committee decision. The educator has reached out to inform his director, his principal, and myself, that he would like to put a proposal for a sabbatical. He did so by the certain timeline that's outlined in the contract, and he also sent some of his proposals as well, directed to the school committee for your review. Where we have not, I don't think in anybody's memory, had someone request this, so we were trying to feel out the best process to facilitate this request, he had a proposal and decide whether or not we feel it meets the criterion as outlined by the contract, and whether it's part of that criterion, is, does it serve the district, is it financially feasible, and does it serve his professional development as well. So what our proposal is, is that we are asking that we create and contact the educator for a meeting with the school chair to go through the proposal in person, so he has the ability to make that request in person, and that the chair also speak with the director and Gina Starius, who is the curriculum, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum, to get a full context of this proposal, and its context within his or her department as a teacher, and its impact on the school and the work, to see if it fits the criterion and whether or not it should be granted or not. So we're, we're putting this on the agenda, because it's part of what we should do publicly and part of our contractual obligation, and we're, we're seeking to facilitate it through the chair of the school committee, so we can schedule a face-to-face time with the educator and the director and the Assistant Superintendent to evaluate and respond in the timeline that's outlined in the contract.
So just wanted to see if there are any questions or comments about the process or...
Makes sense.
Great. All right. Then our final, final item of major business is a discussion about school resource officer. We've had an opportunity to hear some bits and pieces, we thought it'd be nice to have a conversation around the table, and just open it up for brief discussion. Background, or should we just launch into it?
Sure, so the, the context of this proposal takes root in, directly after the Parkland incident in Florida. The Board of Selectmen called to meet with myself and the police chief to talk about some of the measures that we have in the schools regarding safety, the training that we do, the protocols that we have, some of which are transparent, some of which are confidential. We partner very well with the police department, we, we enjoy a great relationship with Chief McLaughlin and Deputy Chief McGyseck, and we have a resource officer at our high school that actually does work with high school families, middle school families, and elementary families on different issues that come up either in the schools or in the community. And so resource officer is a, is a specially-trained police officer, who is a Belmont police officer, not a Belmont public school employee. Their training is really around community-based work, meeting with children, being proactive in schools with children, and meeting with parents around issues and concerns, and being another identified individual in the community and in the school building, where students feel comfortable with, they can build relationships with, and, and they can feel safe talking to. We have had a resource officer at the high school now, I believe this is the fourth year, I think Melissa was hired the year that I started, and we see this position as one that truly creates good relationships with students. It gives our police very, very direct access to great relationships with our, with our students in the community and our parents in the community, and they help us resolve and take on challenges that come back to the schools, either something that happened in the community and plays out in school, or something that happened in the school that we would like their support on. We have a memorandum of agreement with the police department and the schools, and the Middlesex County DA's office, where we, we try to support each other and how we can support families. And a resource officer is a very big part of that process. That doesn't mean that we see them as someone who can arrest folks as much as we see them as someone who has a different role in our school and in our community, that can access different supports where needed, through the Middlesex County DA's officer with the schools, and actually acts as a great partner. So when this situation came about, it was recommended by folks around the table that maybe we would seek a second resource officer for the schools. Each year, the police chief does put in a grant that I signed, because we have sought this position earlier, but we have never sought funding from the schools, and the chief has never sought funding from the town, I believe, in the last few years since I've been here, for this position, and I believe at one time, we did have two resource officers in the district, and we only recently have been able to put one back and maintain one. So that's the context. I can say from experience in working with our current resource officer, in working with resource officers as a building principal, that I find them to be a valuable asset, and just someone different that proactively does a lot of good relationship building with students, and it helps the, the police department and the town. And usually, when they're doing a great job, you don't hear the job that they're doing, because they're proactively addressing difficult situations in and out of school with families and students, that don't erupt into issues. So it's, it's almost like Steve Azola is a great technology director, because the technology always works, and you never have to see him fixing anything. I think Melissa O'Connor and the police department do a great job, because they proactively work with families, build relationships, and people come to them, and come to us, and we can help connect them with the resource officer. And then a lot of issues are preventable and/or proactively addressed, and I just think it's a unique position that would serve the schools well. As we've discussed at this table and with the other folks, we have other things that we also need in the district that we haven't been looking for a resource officer. We could use a licensed social worker, we could use another assistant principal, we could use a family or parent or community liaison, we could use more teachers in classrooms, we could use a robotics teacher, we don't have any math coaches. So we, we have a list of positions that we feel are in that not even second bucket of needs, that are actually in the first bucket, that are being forced out into the second bucket. But a resource officer is a great opportunity for the district, and, and it's been offered to us by the Board of Selectmen to consider. Given our relationship with the police chief and our success with our, our current resource officer, I think it's a great opportunity, albeit in the context of one need that would be addressed, along with some other positions that we just don't have the funds for, but this is, this is something that I think is, in and of itself, a very good idea.
So any comments or discussion?
So just to be clear, it sounds like you're supportive of the idea, your recommendation is to accept it?
My, my recommendation is to accept it, correct? And, and as is, it would be considered a middle school resource officer. The middle school also has a DA officer on site, and this would be in addition to that officer. So Mike McAllister was contacting, he as well is, is in support of it. I think some folks get nervous, well, we'll have someone with a gun in the school, that scares some folks. We currently have DA officer who does come in uniform, and carries a sidearm in school, we have a resource officer at the high school, and, and these folks, the DA officer in particular, does go down and interact with the elementary staff at certain times as well, so that it shouldn't be too unfamiliar to, to students and folks. And the hope would be that the more engagement and the more they're seen in the schools in a positive way, would actually reduce the, the nervousness around that kind of concept.
So would the, would a middle school person be able to fill in for the high school person when they're absent? Would the DA officer be relieved to attend the elementary schools more if a position were at the middle school?
So because we haven't put the position in place, we haven't decided on what the day-to-day responsibilities would be, I, I can say that I have worked with Melissa O'Connor just this weekend on an elementary concern, and then two or three weeks ago on a middle school concern, and just an extra set of hands that can address the whole district. They might be housed here at the middle school, because it's the second biggest school in the district, that's actually the biggest school in the district. That, that that would not preclude either one of these resource officers from going down and supporting any elementary needs, or, or actually collaborating. And in my previous district, a long time ago, when I had fun at work as a, as a principal, we had a middle school resource officer and a high school officer, and the dialogue that they had, where middle school students would talk about, geez, my older sister said, or my older brother said, or, we were really getting really good synergy around those conversations with students and, and being really proactive. So I think that just having more police presence with children, making conversations and making relationships, would go a long way proactively for, for creating a safe environment for schools in the long run, which I think was the, the reason why the Board of Selectmen asked us to consider this request.
And from a funding perspective, how is that envisioned right now? Will we find funds in the existing budget, or will we just add another headcount to the budget for FY19?
So we currently don't fund the, the resource officer right now, that comes out of the police budget. Given that the school district has asked for and has currently been able to request nine more teacher FTEs for next year, which we consider a huge ask, and it, and so far we've received well, that in the last, that would mean that we would be receiving up to twenty-nine FTEs in the last four years. Ten in year one of the override, five in year two, five in year three, and then nine next year, that's, so, and the police haven't added anybody. So we have been asked to look if we could split this cost of forty-five thousand by the schools and forty-five thousand by the police, but instead of annually splitting it with them, we were, we were thinking, and Tony and I, as our Director of Finance, have been looking at how we can offset costs for another position, and just reduce our general fund budget by that forty-five thousand and give it to the police, so we don't have to split the cost year to year, and kind of have that relationship where it's part of our budget and part of their budget, that we would try to utilize offsets to our technology. We found a cost savings through contracted services that we currently provide, if we hire an in-house employee, we may be able to save thirty thousand dollars by eliminating those contractors and hiring a tech, and then we're looking to see if we can find another fifteen to make that forty-five mark, and then we would, if that was the case and that was the will of the committee, look at those numbers and go back and work with the town on the budget, and see if there was a draft to of the budget that could be reduced by forty-five thousand. So that, if we were to pay for it, that would be the mechanism that we would use.
So you mentioned that the chief gets a grant for the one that he has now. Would it be possible, did you have a discussion with him at all about if that would pay for two, or if it's just covering, if it would just cover one, or, because that would be another funding source, and then that would be for the police department to...
I don't, I don't know if the current one is provided by a grant, he has asked me to sign the grant for the second one. I, I don't know if the, the current one is either paid out of the budget or over the grant, I'm not sure. But he has sought the grant for the second one in the last, over the last three years.
Unsuccessful, unsuccessful.
Correct. So I don't know, I'm sure he would continue to apply for that grant, even whether it's in place, to see if he could supplement his budget.
Oh, sure.
Sorry, I didn't hear you correctly.
That's okay.
I think it's in...
Sorry, forgive me one more, and then I know, there's been some discussion about oversight as well of this individual, and I think Melissa does such an amazing job, I think people are thrilled with her in the high school, I think if you could get another Melissa or somebody that good. And in the middle school, it's sort of a very appealing option. Is there a collaboration, do we think, between the principals of the administration and the police department, to sort of find the right individual and have the appropriate oversight, and ensure that we have someone that's sort of meeting the needs of the school?
I, I could certainly talk to the chief about how we could try to partner on that. They, again, they would be a Belmont Police Department employee, I'm sure the job would be posted, part of how they would do their work as well with their employees. their employees. And maybe having discussions with the chief and the deputy chief about what the characteristics are that we're looking for. You know, I think that the piece that makes a successful SRO is that they want to be with the kids all day and they want to do that kind of relationship building as opposed to someone who might go into that world of work for different reasons. So you know, I think having someone apply for it as opposed to being appointed would be helpful because it would show a desire to be there. And I would talk to the chief to see what kind of role we could play in that. Because I do think it's important to have the right person be in the role. You can't be assigned to that work and not want to be there. Middle school's hard enough as it is. No one gets assigned to middle school. You want to be in middle school, that's for sure.
And I just wanted to add, I think it's important to note that this discussion isn't coming about because of a perceived increase of danger or this element of threat that we're responding to, but the conversation emerged as they would normally emerge in the wake of a tragedy. And so we're thinking about options. And while this wasn't number one on our list of budgetary asks, given this opportunity, it seems to make sense to pursue something that provides benefit to the district. We've got a track record at the high school. We don't see any reason it would be a detrimental thing. So just wanted to make that clear, that it's not an urgent threat that we're responding to, but rather a mindful, thoughtful, intentional decision to consider. And there are social work aspects of the job, if I'm remembering correctly from conversations. So it's filling some need that we would find really beneficial as well. All right, so how do we proceed from here with this?
Well, I believe that we were originally asked to consider this position and report back to the Town Administrator, Patrice Carbonne. So I can take back any recommendation or thoughts that you have to her if they're positive to say that we would like to pursue it and give the green light that we would, A, like to pursue the position and B, whether or not we'd like to actually contribute the half of the cost. And then try to work out some of those details about how the mechanisms that would happen. I know Kate did forward me a memorandum of understanding between one school district and one local police department that, you know, we might want to formalize this process with that kind of a document. So I would provide that to the chief to just, we do have other memorandums of agreement around other work that we do with the police. It's not new to them to work with us in that kind of formal way. So we would probably, the chief and I would work out some of the logistics and report back about financial pieces, the desire for us to have one in our school system or a second one, and then some of the details and then present that back to the committee and go from there.
Comfortable with that?
Yeah. And the details, would, part of those would include, or we're just agreeing tonight that the schools are going to pay for half of this?
I think we just stated it in two parts there.
So agree that we would like to pursue the position?
Right.
And do we agree that we would fund half of the position, given what I presented tonight? Those are the two questions, Jack.
I also think we're probably collectively all so interested in that grant continually being submitted to seek other funding, certainly looking back at some of the MASC dialogue around it and concern about unfunded mandates constantly being thrown around.
Can I add?
Keep looking for funds. Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, I was gonna, one thing. The committee, if there's a change to the budget, that would constitute a draft two that I would have to create and bring before the committee to vote upon anyway. So even if the committee were so inclined, whatever the committee's inclination is about what portion of the funding may be charged to the school budget in one form or another, the school committee ultimately will be voting on a draft two budget if that were to be changed and impacted by this cost or anything else. So the committee still does have an opportunity after tonight to actually vote on a budget that reflects, or maybe does or does not reflect an additional school resource officer.
When is that vote? When do we have to take that vote on the draft two budget?
I'd have to check in the public hearing, yes?
We have a public hearing on FY19 vote is May 22nd.
There's a few weeks to work out whatever arrangements.
And so we can bring those facts and that information at least back to the Finance Committee as it relates to the cost and have it be reported out in between on that. And if there is a need to bring the file to the full committee at one of this, at this table, we can do that as well. But to Tony's point, the checkpoint is the budget draft two that we would vote.
Whether it's coming out of the police budget or the school budget, town versus school, it's all taxpayers' money. I don't know if there's, at least it's worth the conversation to talk to maybe the selectmen to see if it makes more sense just to pay it out of, increase the town side of the budget for the full position, given that the school is already so tight from a resource perspective. I understand that even half is a generous offer, so I appreciate it, but I think it might be worth checking handling the second officer the way we've been handling the first officer.
Okay. I'll give them that feedback. That's okay with the group?
I was just gonna say, I appreciated the conversation around it as well, just to rethink what our current relationship is with the SRO and what's in place in terms of supervisory responsibilities and review input and what your role as the superintendent is with that. So I think that's a good moment to do that.
For both, you're saying for both positions?
Yeah, I certainly have that. I mean, it sounds like the...
If we do the middle school position, we should use an opportunity to look for all the high school as well.
Yeah, exactly. I'm not, it sounds like we don't have a unique MOU within Belmont, but it's more of a, I don't know what it looks like in terms of the middle section, sheriff.
Great, thank you. All right, so then we'll move to our traditional subcommittee and liaison update. So Finance Subcommittee met this morning, correct?
We did. We met currently with the War Committee's Subcommittee, Education Subcommittee. And we went through a number of questions posed by the War Committee's Subcommittee regarding the FY19 budget. They were submitted in advance and Tony and John did a bunch of preparation in response and we had a good working session. This should feed into the War Committee Subcommittee, Education's preparation of their report on the school budget as part of the budgeting process and input to town meeting.
Policies Subcommittee?
We had a meeting in March to start talking about policies as they relate to the issue of starting schools later and also after-school programs. Had a very vibrant discussion on both, but sort of ran out of time, so didn't really make any decisions. So we're meeting again on the 4th of April at 8:00 AM to continue those discussions.
When can we officially get to say the last day of school? When is, when's our officially, officially?
Well, I took the stakes out of my driveway yesterday, so if it snows again, it's my fault, sorry. Probably should wait a couple more days.
I never say never, so I would wait at least one more meeting.
Yeah.
So we, that's a good point. So we currently, the last day of school is actually the last day on the calendar.
June 20th.
Which would be June 20th, which is a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
So that's currently the last day of school if there are no other snow events or emergencies in the building.
There is a, there is a date after which the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education does not require you to make up the day, and I can look that up.
Sometime in the mid to end of April, that they say you can call your last day now.
It might be May 1st. But I'll double check.
Just hopeful thinking. All right, Curriculum and Instruction Subcommittee, we have a meeting.
April 10th is our meeting, so.
Capital Budget, who's in?
We met on the 15th of March and we're meeting again this Thursday, the 29th.
Warrant Committee, I believe, meets next Wednesday, the 4th. High School Building Committee, anything happening?
Yeah, okay. So we have been very, very busy at the Belmont High School Building Committee. We had a leadership meeting this afternoon where we went over the security pieces of the project. We had the police department, the fire department, our current middle school principal and current high school principal, myself and the leadership team and the design team, with two experts that talked about features that are in most schools and which ones that we would like to see in place and kind of talked a little bit about how our schools work and what we would like to see in place. There'll be a, when we share a co-meeting with the building committee on May 8th, that's going to be one of the topics I think that they'd like to talk about with the school committee present, so it will be a meeting that will be joint. We have gone to the MSBA last week with our latest proposal and we are working on the final footprint of the building and the design of the building, not necessarily all the pieces and where they go inside, but the footprint and how many floors and the makeup of each area and the adjacencies of programs is an ongoing discussion, which I think has been really exciting. We have engaged our seven through 12 educator team, our steering committee. We have a second meeting with those folks tomorrow. Our design team met with them last week, will meet with them tomorrow to inform the adjacencies and how the school's going to work and operate. We have also had the design team meet with the directors and the directors are doing subsequent work with their teachers and their departments. We have also given some real thought to reducing square footage wherever we can and some of that has been accomplished over the last couple of days, which we feel really thankful for. And the design team has really kind of shrunk the volume of the school building in terms of creating more usable space as opposed to maybe spaces that might be more atrium and stairwell-like, making them more useful and practical. We had a meeting that was attended by members of the school committee and we presented the new hybrid version of what we're hoping to present to the building committee tomorrow morning. And it was absolutely a very, a very good proposal that addressed the common sense practices of the district and what we need in the schools, seven through, seven and eight on this side, and then our nine through 12. And I think it's really beginning to take shape and forming. This building is a tool around the learning that we want to see happen with our students and our teachers in a way that's safe and clear and fits the program that we have in Belmont. So Perkins and Will has been very much a listener in this work and has been doing a nice job of modifying as we go to make sure that the building is shaping, is being shaped by the input of right now, the teachers who will work there and the administrators who will work there and what's good for kids and teaching and learning. So we will be getting ready to vote as a building committee on that footprint tomorrow. And then the next level of work will be the adjacencies and really figuring out what the insides of the school looks like. There's going to be continued conversation about traffic, continued conversations about safety, continued conversations about the size and the design of the school and where we can make some efficiencies. And we have a date sometime in April or May that we'll be meeting with the MSBA again. So it's all steam ahead.
Can I just one comment? There are maybe six or seven public meetings scheduled over the next couple of months, over the next couple, those two months. So I guess if anyone in the public is interested in engaging around any aspects of the design, like the next couple of months is the time to do that.
There are actually 60 meetings between now and June 28th for the building committee. Six zero. Bill gave out the big list today. I heard Joy's giving that out. It's therapeutic for him to say, here's another 60 meetings in the next few months. But there are six zero meetings that have been scheduled. And to Tom's point, they are open to the public tomorrow is, there are night meetings who will be asking folks for feedback. There are teacher-led meetings, director-led meetings, feedback being given and actually meetings where Pat Bruce and Bill are going out to meet with different neighbors to talk about traffic and talk about being a neighbor of our large school project that are being planned and so that the outreach is, has been substantial. And I give Bill Labalo a lot of credit for spearheading that work and that engagement.
I was at the meeting today, I expressed my gratitude for what everyone around the table knows and brings to the conversation, things that we don't necessarily even know to think about yet, you know, just every little detail from the fire, safety and the police oversight and the architectural design type of class and everything, it was just, it's so heartening to know that experts are engaged and it's a town-wide process. It's just really quite a thing. 60 meetings, okay. And the community path update, Andrea's not here, but that's also part of the site plan for the school, so that'll be interesting to see how that evolves. Library long-range planning, I've heard nothing. I don't know if anyone else has anything to share. Excellent. So in terms of other business, we have three sets of minutes to review. A couple of people were absent at these various meetings, including myself were one of them, so why don't we take them in chronological order, beginning with February 6th? And this, we had had these for a while before the snowbait, so hopefully folks have a chance to look.
I think we were ready to vote, but we realized we didn't have the quorum to go around, right?
I think you're right. Nothing's changed.
And no comments for February 6th.
And actually, I, two of us have to abstain for that, so that leaves three, which is still not enough for a vote on February 6th. So we can move to the next one. We can move to February 27th and circle back.
Do we need, if we have a quorum, is it a majority of the quorum that could approve the minutes or no?
And I think people can abstain as a part of that. That's fine.
Yeah, you can, we're part of the quorum, but...
Right, you're part of the quorum, but then you abstain and things don't...
All right, then let's go.
Motion to approve the minutes of February 6th?
Second, move second. All those opposed, or in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions? Okay, three in favor, two abstentions, zero opposed. Thank you. All right, February 27th. Their motion to approve the February 27th minutes, motion, great, second, thank you. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, terrific. Look at us, how efficient. Then finally, our March 1st, priest no date meeting minutes. Fabulous, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, fabulous. So our next meeting is scheduled for April 10th, but before we adjourn, we have some transitional business, just some thank yous to express for both a transition for one member and a bigger transition for another member. So just on behalf of the committee, wanted to say thank you very much, Tom, first of all, for serving in this role and we will greatly look forward to working with you in your next role. So while it's not official yet, signs look good.
It's been a pleasure working with this group and I look forward to the continued collaboration in this slightly different seat.
It's a little pre, pre, what's it, pre, pre, but it's, thank you. And then Marat, just all best wishes for your move and we will miss you and thank you so much for...
Thank you very much.
And actually, for the viewing public, John, would you help me on behalf of, let's see if I have this right, this was Susan's suggestion to take with you. We're going to sign it, but we didn't do it yet, so just a little piece of Belmont.
Thank you so much.
Available at the town hall. All proceeds go to Belmont Historical Society. So as I said, next meeting is April 10th. If there's nothing else to discuss, entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion. That's my final act.
All those in favor then?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, thanks.
If you haven't adjourned, you can't leave.